November 7th is Election Day and Denver voters will decide on three DPS directors. The at-large position, as well as districts one and five. One of the main focuses for families in the district is safety, of course, and school resource officers, especially after the shooting death of Luis Garcia earlier this year. The 16-year-old student was killed right outside Denver East High School, as well as the shooting of two deans by a student during a required daily pat-down. That's why CBS Colorado has partnered with Regis University, Chalk Beat Colorado, and Educate Denver to bring you a debate for the three open district director positions. The at-large position will have four candidates on the ballot: John Youngquist, Kwame Spearman, and Brittany Johnson. Paul Ballinger, however, Paul Ballinger has dropped out of the race and endorsed Youngquist. Brittany Johnson also running but was unable to attend the debate because of illness. The directors are elected to four-year staggered terms. All candidates run on a nonpartisan basis. We'll take you now to the debate between the candidates at Regis University, starting with the at-large debate.
Welcome to the DPS School Board candidate debates here at Regis University. We're so excited you can join us. As Jenna said, my name is Dominic DeZudi. We're so excited for our audience here at Regis and for everyone tuning in at home. We want to thank our partners, Educate Denver, Chalk Beat Colorado, and of course CBS News Colorado. I also think our friends at CBS News Colorado are making close captioning available to our Spanish-speaking audience. We also have an ASL interpreter, which you'll see on the screen as well. Now, tonight's debate will be offering three different debates. The first debate will be featuring the candidates for the at-large races that is voted on by all the voters in Denver. Our second debate will be featuring the candidates in District Five, those representing Northwest Denver, right here where Regis University is at. And then finally, our last debate of the evening will be from the candidates in District One from Southeast Denver. I am joined by two wonderful professionals tonight who will be doing all the heavy lifting. They'll be asking all the questions of our candidates. To my far left, Michelle Griegego, an Emmy Award-winning anchor and reporter at CBS News Colorado, also a proud alumna of DPS. And to my immediate left, Melanie Asmar, senior reporter at Chalk Beat Colorado. She's been covering DPS here in Denver since 2015. Now, the ground rules for our debate tonight, there will be no opening statements. We will be featuring a closing statement. We've asked each of our candidates to offer one minute or less answers to each question. We're offering a single rebuttal to our candidates to feature, to use in the debate, which will also come with a 30-second response from their opponent. And at the end of the debate, we've already picked the order of the closing statements. We'll offer those for 30 seconds apiece. Finally, some ground rules for all of you here at Regis, for our audience. Out of respect and to get the very most time with our candidates, we ask you to remain quiet throughout the entire debate, except for two points. One, to welcome our candidates, and at the end, we'll ask all of you to thank our candidates. So, without any further ado, let me introduce them and get started. So, audience, please join me in welcoming our candidates for the at-large debate, Kwame Spearman and John Youngquist. Okay, let's get started. Our first topic of the evening is school safety. Michelle, please start us off.
Okay, we are going to start with Kwame first. Do you agree with the board's decision to reinstate police officers known as SROs in certain schools? Would you ever vote to remove them again, and under what circumstances?
Sure. So, first off, we should not have removed SROs in 2020 without any plan. It was a colossal mistake. I am supportive of having SROs in our school right now. But I'm the only candidate in the race that by the end of my first term, I actually want SROs out of our school. And we've got to have a vision to get there. And the way that we get there is we've got to change our discipline matrix right now. We need to have alternative schools. There was funding for alternative schools, it dried up. And so, right now, we're in a situation in which we've got students who need education, but maybe not in the schools that we categorize as our traditional schools. If we evolve our discipline matrix, and on the board, I want to be a leader on doing this, we can be in a situation where SROs are not in our schools. We've got to remember how we got to this place. The Black and Latino prison pipeline was increased by having SROs in our schools. That is unacceptable. We need them out. However, we're in a crisis of confidence right now, and that was because we removed them without a plan. So, let's keep our SROs there, and by the end of my first term, we're going to have community officers in our schools to help us move forward. Thank you.
Kwame, thank you. I want to extend that question to you, John, and I'll repeat it. Do you agree with the board's decision to reinstate police officers known as SROs in certain schools? And would you ever vote to remove them again, and under what circumstances?
Yes, I've been principal in schools that have had SROs and those that have not had SROs, and I believe there are ways to make schools safe either way. I agree fully with the decision that the board made to bring the SROs back. I was one of 17 principals three years ago that wrote a letter to the Board of Education asking them not to take SROs out of schools because they did not have a plan. The school board has not developed nor yet engaged a plan that allows us to understand how we'll be safe overall in our schools. Right now, SROs will continue to be a part of that plan. Over time, we need to ensure we develop an understanding of how they best fit in our schools and where it is that we're gaining value from them with a full complement of mental health and safety services.
Thank you both. This next question comes from Jesus Sanchez at the newspaper El Comercio de Colorado. What should be included in a new memorandum of understanding between DPS and the Denver Police Department regarding SROs? What should SROs be allowed to do or not do? And we'll start with you, John.
It's important for us to take a look at the need for a memorandum of understanding that we have not had over the course of the last 10 years in the Denver Public Schools. It has not been renewed, and a specific MOU that relates to SROs needs to include a very clear definition of what they do and what they do not do. First, the work that they will do. They will work to become a part of our community, a caring part of our community that is understood to be a service, that is, they provide a service that is well beyond the role that they play with straight safety. They need to be a part of the conversation in regard to how we engage with our community to make certain that people understand their role is about a relationship with young people. Their role is about understanding how it is that we work together. I'll be clear about the role that they do not play, right? They are not people that engage disciplinary practices in our schools. They are not people that approach students when there is a concern that is in play, but they are people that are a part of our community in a more positive way as well.
Thank you, John. Same question, Kwame. What should be included in an MOU between DPS and the Denver Police?
First off, Melanie, I love your reporting. I just wanted to get that in, and I'm so happy you answered, you asked this question. I met with our police chief, Ron Thomas, and I was like, let's review the MOU. What should be the instances in which SROs are interacting with our students? And the reality is, it's like 1% of their time, which underscores the problem. Where we were in the 2010s is that if you see two students who are just nudging or pushing one another, and an SRO gets involved, and one of those students pushes the SRO, that student has pushed a police officer. That is a big deal and a big problem. The reality is, is that the only time our SROs should really be involved in our schools is if there's imminent danger and imminent harm. And that, if you actually just think about that, you've got to question, do we need SROs in our schools? We have to elevate ourselves and have a plan in which we can get them out of our schools and have community officers. One of the differences between this race is I aspire for that, and we are going to have a plan to get us there. Because the reality is, they should be community officers who understand how to de-escalate situations to keep our teachers and students safe.
Kwame, thank you. So, the next question gets at an issue raised by community members that submitted questions right before tonight's forum. Do you think students accused of serious crimes should be expelled? And these are students who have been accused of crimes but not convicted.
And the question's for me?
Yes.
Okay, so, no, they should not be expelled until they are found guilty. As someone who's got a law degree, you are innocent until proven guilty. The question is, should they be allowed in our traditional schools while they are dealing with this conflict? And to me, that answer is no. And that's why we need alternative learning environments that can give these students both the education they deserve, but also the special treatment that they need. Other school districts are doing this. Cherry Creek Schools has alternative learning environments where they partner with the community. They give therapy and other psychological services, and they're able to meet those students where they are. It's absurd to me that we are not doing the same in Denver Public Schools. As far as expulsions, though, we need to like understand the numbers we're talking about. There are only 12 kids that were expelled in Denver Public Schools. This is a regional problem. Cherry Creek Schools expelled over 100, and those students find themselves in Denver Public Schools. We need leadership to where we can properly have all school districts deal with their students in ways that we need moving forward, prioritize safety, and let's have alternative learning environments.
Kwame, thank you. John, I want to extend the question to you. Do you think students accused of serious crimes should be expelled?
This is a big question and one that I have worked on over the course of the last 30 years. I've been a principal for 18 years of my career, and every day I've walked into the school, making certain that we've prioritized safety. Students that have committed serious crimes may or may not be expelled. It depends on the specific situation that has occurred, but I don't believe that they should be in our schools until we have a strong understanding of what happened. If there are charges that are serious felony charges that have been laid out against a student, then a response can be that a student is denied admission, or a student may be expelled. But when we're talking about the kind of context we're going to provide for students depending on the particular situation, we need to understand the complexity of the district's policy in alignment with statute, in alignment with federal law. And when we're doing that, we need to understand that we have to create a context where we have multiple responses for students depending on the specific situation that they're in. The idea of pressing students into schools that have been engaged in serious crimes is a new one. We need to be able to be more creative.
Thank you. We've got one more question about safety. It's about the district's discipline matrix, which says when students might be expelled or suspended. Would you propose any changes to the discipline matrix, and if so, what changes? John, we'll start with you.
Yes, I have worked with different district discipline matrices over time. And the matrix that we have right now was developed in a way that was inappropriate and implemented in a way that was ineffective. It was created without the input by our principals, our assistant principals, and deans. It was created without the input of the people that are doing the work on a day-to-day basis. Right now, we need to recreate that matrix in a way that ensures that it is in alignment with our policy, with statute, and with federal law, which it is not. We need to recreate that matrix in a way that it empowers school communities to both keep their students safe and to engage the right kinds of supports that students need to be successful over time. Right now, we need to take the year to not just think about how we're redeveloping elements of this matrix, but to scrap it, to recreate it, and to put it in play in a way that makes sense for our students and our communities.
Thank you. Kwame, same question.
So, the reason why I think I'm going to be a great board member is I'm both an insider and an outsider. As an insider, I went through our school district. I got the best out of it, and I did that as a blackmail. As an outsider, I got to be honest, I don't even know what a discipline matrix means. Respectfully, John, I don't even know what you just said on that point, and that's what the community feels. We need to simplify what we call our discipline matrix, and it needs to essentially have three components. We need to have baseline guidelines for safety in our schools. We need to have a plan for SROs, and in my opinion, once again, we need to get to community officers. We need to have a learning environment for students who are causing disciplinary problems or who are dealing with external things that affect them in the classroom, and we need to support our students and teachers. That doesn't sound like a matrix to me. That sounds like common sense. And what we need so desperately on this board is common sense, so our community can understand the rules that their students are facing. Thank you.
Our next topic tonight is academics. Michelle?
So, this question is also based on a theme raised by community members. Measured by standardized tests, DPS is serving white students better than it's serving Black and Latinx students. What can the board do to better serve Black and Latinx students? And Kwame, we'll start with you.
So, just to be clear how big the achievement gap is. If you are a white student in Denver Public Schools, we are the second-highest performing school district in the entire state. The gap between our white and Black and Latino students is 43%. So, here's what we got to do. We've got to understand what's working for our white students, because actually, we should applaud that. And what I think is working is its access to choice, its different educational environments. Parents, lo and behold, when they get to decide what is the right environment for their kid, their kid learns more, performance goes up. We need to give our Black and Latino students the same access. The way that we do that is we've got to have great neighborhoods in every school. We've also got to have a different perspective of our leaders. We've got some schools in the district that are integrated, and they still have the same achievement gap. So, we need a new generation of thought. We've got to get choice for our Black and Latino students, and we need to get the neighborhoods that don't have it, the resources that they need to properly educate our students and to support our teachers. Thank you.
Kwame, thank you. John, what can the board do to better serve Black and Latinx students?
To better serve Black and Latinx students in the Denver Public Schools, we need to acknowledge that they don't feel welcome in our schools and in our classrooms as much as we need for them to be. We need to acknowledge that we don't prioritize the most experienced teachers to be in our classrooms with Black and Latino students. We need to acknowledge that we are not yet good enough, right, with our instructional practices to accelerate the learning of our Black and Latinx students. And what we have to do is what the district did not do with our most recent annual report, right? When you look at that report, our district used aggregate data to take a look at how we're doing across the district, and it looks like we're doing fine. There are celebrations in that report because we failed to disaggregate the data, which will allow us to begin to understand really how bad we are in some of the places and how much work we need to do to be great for our Latinx and our Black learners across the school district.
Can I use rebuttal? Go ahead.
So, John, I agree with you. The district has failed our students, but let's be honest about who the district is. East High School, I'm a proud alum. The achievement gap at East both reflects and at times has been greater than the achievement gap for Denver Public Schools. If you're going to run on your record as being an educator, do you think that you either didn't close the achievement gap, or are you telling the people that you can be a representative understanding that we have a majority-minority school district for the entire city?
John, your response?
Based on my decades of experience, what I was able to do when I came back to East High School was take a look at the data, and in 2018, East High School had the lowest rate of growth for math and language for all students, including Black and Latino students. In two years, listening to teachers and understanding the instructional challenge, they were able to solve that. And East High School in two years became the highest-growth school in math and language for our students across the board.
We will move forward to our next question, our next topic, and that is board governance. Melanie, I think you start us off.
Yes, so this at-large seat that you're both running for is currently held by School Board Vice President Ayante Anderson. Are there any votes Vice President Anderson has taken in the past four years that you disagree with, or issues on which you would have voted another way? Kwame, we'll start with you.
So, I just want to be, I want to go back to the last point. John, in 2018, you had been principal at East for seven years. You've got to accept responsibility as to what's going on. As far as...
That is untrue. I had been principal at the school for two years.
In 2018?
In 2018, I returned. In 2018, I returned.
Let's get to the question. After a five-year stint of leading East High School.
Kwame, John? That was my first year back.
Let's get to the question again. Melanie, the board of governance question?
Yes, are there any votes Vice President Anderson has taken in the past four years that you disagree with, or you would have voted another way on, Kwame?
So, let's just address the elephant in the room, right? When you see the resigned DPS signs all across our city, in many ways, shape, and form, they are about one school board member, and we are vying to replace that school board member. That school board member got out of the race when I got in. But you know what? It's not worth it to continue to pile on that school board member anymore. I want to move forward. I want to talk about the district that is going to close our achievement gap. I want to talk about the district that is going to make our schools safe, and I want to talk about the district that is going to support our students and teachers. He needed to leave. I was the only one, I guess Paul as well, who wanted to challenge him because he was not the right person, but I'm trying to look forward moving forward.
Thank you. The question was about any votes he's taken that you disagree with. Were there any votes he's taken that you disagree with?
I mean, removing SROs from the schools is a pretty big one. That can be the answer.
Got it. John, same question for you.
Do you mind repeating the question?
Yes, sure. Are there any votes that Vice President Anderson, who currently holds the seat, has taken in the past four years that you disagree with, or issues on which you would have voted another way?
There are several, and I do agree that it has been a board, I believe. It's been a board that has made decisions that we've needed to retract over time, and that Mr. Anderson, Director Anderson, has been a part of that challenge. Anytime a board of education is making decisions that you need to retract over a course of time, you need to rethink the experience that went into making that vote in the first place. There are two that come to mind. One related to the retraction of the innovation zone and needing to rethink elements of that decision that needed to be changed over time. The other one certainly is SROs, where we asked him and the board to not pull SROs out, and over the course of two and a half years, after two students had died and two staff members had been injured at East High School, they retracted that vote finally.
All right, John, thank you. And our next question. The school board extended Superintendent Alex Maredo's contract in 2021 before it had ever evaluated him, and it voted to give him a 10% raise earlier this year after just one evaluation. Do you agree with those actions, and how would you oversee the superintendent? And John, we'll start with you.
How we supervise and evaluate our employees and motivate our employees over time matters tremendously, and I think this was a model that we cannot see again in regard to how we supervise and how we respond to a lack of performance by a superintendent. I have two daughters that have their first jobs right now. I want them to know that when they work hard and they do well, they're going to get raises. Right now, over the course of this, the last two years, we've seen this superintendent have his contract extended twice, receive a raise. I'm wondering if he will get a bonus at the end of this next month or two when he finally has an evaluation from our school district. It's been difficult to watch, and no, I'm not in agreement with how this has moved forward for this superintendent.
John, thank you. Kwame, I want to extend the same question to you. Do you agree with those actions of the board voting to extend his contract and giving him a raise?
No, I would have voted against it, and I felt what everyone else feels. It was untimely, and he hadn't proven that he deserved a contract extension or a raise at the point. But let's take a step back as to, I think, why we got here. We got here because we pushed out Susana Kadorva, which we should not have done. And because of that, we've been more gentle than we probably should be with our superintendent. What we need is someone who has private sector board experience, which I do. We've got to hold our superintendent accountable, but we've got to understand the metrics and the vision that he should be held accountable to. Right now, respectfully, there is no vision for Denver Public Schools, and subsequently collecting data or having metrics or KPIs that we as a community can understand how we're doing, all of those things are absent. So, that's why I think I'm going to be a really good fit on the board, because I know how to do that. I can help create a vision that is right for our entire community. I can understand how we move towards that vision, and most importantly, I can apply tough love, also try to support our superintendent to get our school district to a better place.
Thank you both. This next question is on a theme that also emerged in questions submitted by community members. The school board has been criticized as dysfunctional, and polls have shown low confidence in its ability to govern. What changes would you propose to how the board does business? Kwame?
Sure. So, once again, I think those polls are by and large talking about one member of the school board. I've had the opportunity to meet with our school board members, and here's what I can tell you. They care about our students, they care about our teachers, they're trying to get us to the right place. But we do need new leadership, and I plan to be there. The one thing that we've got to do is we've got to have a compelling vision. I think as far as safety, we've got to talk about what we aspire to get to. We are in a crisis of confidence right now, and of course, if people don't feel comfortable or safe sending their kids to school, we're going to lose board support. But once again, I believe that the night is darkest before the dawn, and that we are going to rally the community back together. You've seen what's happened with the resigned DPS, with groups like Educate Denver. We are holding ourselves accountable. We're going to have an election, and I think with that, there's going to be a new board and a new mandate to get everything back on track.
Thank you. John, same question. What changes would you propose to how the board does business?
I'm interested in seeing a board of education that is not invested so deeply into two things. One is individual interests that are ruling the day, and then a kind of group think that leads to inaction, that we cannot get our ideas together and develop ideas so that we're able to secure an understanding of what our next actions are going to be, what our next expectations are going to be, what is it that we need from this superintendent, right? So, I would propose most certainly that we have significant change on this board. I don't believe it's just one person. I believe it is a context and a culture that's been developed over time, and we need to make certain that we engage the leadership immediately that allows us to take the kind of turn and change over the course of the next several months, where we have direction and we're taking steps toward a focus on safety and student learning, those areas of focus that our community needs from us.
Okay, we're headed to our next topic tonight, that is school models. Michelle?
So, I want to ask John first. Denver gained national attention for its family of schools, which includes traditional district-run schools, semi-autonomous innovation schools, and independent public charter schools. The current board has been less inclined to champion charters and has limited innovation. And this question comes from Fernando Sergio at KBNO Que Bueno Radio. What is your opinion on strengthening traditional schools versus reimagining them as innovation or charter schools?
We have developed a context for our schools over time that we are not finished developing. There's a young woman in the front row here who attends a micro school, and we've heard a little bit about micro schools. We haven't heard enough about different kinds of innovation that we need to continue to evolve over time. Right now, we have a context of our school district that relates to district-run schools, innovation-status schools, and charter schools. We have about 90,000 students in our district, 30,000 of them attend charter schools. We have the responsibility to define the context we have right now, to create a new vision around where we need to be as a school district, and to take confident steps toward that. Where we have been is stumbling around trying to solve the latest problem, but we need that new vision. We need a design that allows us to move toward it confidently so that we're serving students across our district. And I want to make sure that people understand that I oppose the corporatization and the privatization of our school district, but I am all for innovation that continues to strengthen our schools for all students.
John, thank you. Kwame, I want to ask you the same question. What's your opinion on strengthening traditional schools versus reimagining them as innovation or charter schools?
So, just about every educational player who is making an endorsement in the race, from our Denver Classroom Teachers Association, to the Denver Federation of Paraprofessionals, to our nutrition workers, has endorsed my candidacy. And the reason is because I actually do believe in neighborhood schools. What John just said at the end, privatization of our schools, his money is coming from an organization called Denver Families. Google it. Denver Families is funded by two people, Reed Hastings and John Arnold. They are committed to the privatization of our schools. In fact, in 2019, they were so committed to privatizations that they supported Republican candidates who were pro-life, meaning very simply, they want private schools more than they care about women's reproductive rights. This is a huge issue. We have got to support our neighborhood schools. I'm not anti-charter, but it's time to have some honest conversations about where our school funding is going and how we reimagine that moving forward, and what the effect has been in areas like the Far Northeast, in areas like Southwest Denver, where we've seen over the past 10 years a dramatic increase in charter schools in those neighborhoods.
Rebuttal? Go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to be very clear that Denver Families for Action has not asked me to do anything beyond the vision that I've just represented for you. I have spent 35 years in neighborhood schools, in district-run schools, and I am devoted to making certain that they are strong for every child across our district that attends them. I am also devoted to strengthening the innovation status in the charter schools to make certain that every single child, no matter the kind of school that their parent chooses, has an excellent experience and experiences the kind of academic growth that they deserve.
So, let's be clear. John did not challenge what I said about Denver Families. It is true, they're for privatization of schools. All he said is that Denver Families hasn't asked him to do anything yet, and I hope they haven't because that would actually be a violation of campaign finance laws, because they've created out-of-state money that is coming in and trying to influence our election. It's absurd, and I challenge every single person to look into who they are and to what It's absurd, and I challenge every single person to look into who they are and to what they are doing. They are far more extreme than your traditional reform groups, of which those members are friends of mine. It's absolutely absurd. It's politics in our school board, and we've got to stop it moving forward. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to our next topic for questions tonight, integrating schools. And I believe a question goes to Melanie. Michelle, you up next? Melanie? Thank you. My apologies.
That's okay. So Denver schools are segregated by race and family income, according to a recent study by the Latino Education Coalition and the Bueno Center at CU Boulder. This is especially true for Latino students. What policies would you support to desegregate Denver schools? John, we'll start with you.
Yeah, that report was glaring in its understanding of, in its representation of the challenges that our students and families are facing across the district. I have, I was bused as a student in the Denver Public Schools. I've been a principal of a school under busing and a school beyond a busing, several schools beyond busing. And what I know is this, that our school district's challenge with integration is going to need a complex response that includes both the understanding and development, the understanding and the acknowledgement that neighborhood schools matter, that choice for our family matters, and that we need to begin to invest in our students having more access to a broader range of choices in order to identify how, across our district, we will integrate our schools.
Thank you. Kwame, same question. What policies would you support to desegregate Denver schools?
I understand why we wanted to have a family of schools 15, 20 years ago, but we've got to ask ourselves the question, are we properly supporting our neighborhoods? Unfortunately, and this is not the role of the school board, our neighborhoods are segregated to begin with. And if you don't have strong neighborhood schools, you're going to increase the amount of segregation. And when you think about how we view performance of schools and the information that we are putting out about our schools, if parents have the opportunity, they're going to go to schools in more affluent neighborhoods. That's the reality of the situation. And you compile that on the schools that we do actually have diversity, we're not closing that achievement gap. We've got to fundamentally reimagine how we think about our schools. We do need choice, but we've also got to ensure that schools that are in Black and Latino neighborhoods have proper resources, because they don't right now, and they're not attractive enough to where there's flight. And if we don't change that, we're not going to solve what that report was trying to show, which is that based on if your language, your race--
Need you to wrap?
I'll finish it later. Thank you.
Thank you, Kwame. Going to our next topic, that being the budget. DPS is an enormous budget, and Michelle, you start with the next question.
Okay, so Kwame, I'll pose this to you first. Where should DPS invest more money, and where should it invest less money?
So I'm the only candidate that has a teacher bill of rights. It is absolutely absurd how we are supporting our teachers. My belief is that the best way to support our students is to support our teachers. We need our teachers to be the highest-paid in the region, we need to improve their benefits. Do you know where teachers don't even get access to maternity leave right now? And we need to think innovatively. We need to build educator housing moving forward. This is the biggest issue that we are going to face over the next five or 10 years, as Denver becomes more and more affordable. Where we need to spend less money? We need to spend less money on lawsuits, right? And we are doing things where they're terminating principals ahead of their part, or taking meetings that are private, that should be open to the public, that are resulting in massive settlements. We've got to stop that. But most importantly, we've got to support our educators. If our teachers cannot live and thrive in Denver, they are not going to be teachers. On the campaign trail, it's been crazy to meet so many good people who either want to be teachers, or have had to leave the profession because they can't afford to be it. We've got to change it immediately.
Kwame, thank you. John, where should DPS invest more money, and where should it invest less money?
I agree completely. Fist bump? Yeah, okay. Now, the biggest challenge is that we do not know how much money we have, right? We have a $1.3 billion budget. We do not have transparency into that budget. We don't know where it is that money is going to be spent. We don't know whether we are spending it as we're intending to. We don't know what the intentions are with that resource over time, and we're not monitoring toward outcomes that matter. I'm going to go back to the annual report, and I want to have you take a look at one of the pages of the annual report that is about our budget. And I think it's half of one page in the annual report. Typically, we're going to want to see where we've been, where's our resource now, where are we headed with that resource? Right now, you know what that annual report tells us? That we have $1.3 billion in our budget this year. That's it.
Okay, moving on, getting to our next topic for tonight's debate, going to declining enrollment. Melanie, start us off.
So the school board voted this year to close three schools with low enrollment. All the candidates have talked about the need for more community engagement at affected schools, but what criteria should DPS use to identify schools for potential closure? John, we'll start with you.
Yeah. The criteria is so far beyond what we've used so far. I'm concerned about this year. I talked about transparency in the budget, and we don't know where we are now and where we're likely to be forecasted over time. We don't have a great understanding of that, so we default to decisions that are made in a crisis context where we're not going to make good decisions. In another month or two, you know there will be a list out again of schools that are needing to be closed supposedly. But we don't know why or how, and we don't have that rationale. Our responsibility as a board needs to be to require our superintendent to create a protocol and a process that allows us to take the time, over the course of 12 to 18 months, to study and understand, where are we with budget, where are we with student enrollment across our district and within our neighborhoods, and how is it that we gain an understanding of what our community wants and needs by going in and listening over time to understand how we should frame changes in resource over time?
Thank you. Kwame, same question. What criteria should DPS use to identify schools?
So two things. One, I actually think we can mitigate a lot of our declining enrollment if we embrace choice and have great neighborhood schools. We're losing about 8% of our students who live in the district to private and going outside of the district, and there are like 400,000 students around Denver. They need to be coming into Denver Public Schools. As far as the criteria, I can tell you what we're not going to do. We're not going to close schools just because they're in Black and Latino areas, and we are seeing declining enrollment in that. We're not going to close schools simply because they're just too small. There needs to be a plan in place which we can equitably take the loss, spread it throughout the district, and have a community-minded lens moving forward with doing it. But I'm actually hopeful that we can use our schools for other spaces, whether it be housing, whether it be wraparound services. And those schools that we are going to have to consolidate, or if we're going to have to consolidate those schools, we'll go to those communities with a very clear plan as to why this move is actually better for them moving forward, and we're going to need a board and superintendent that can get us there.
Going to our next topic tonight, retaining teachers. Michelle?
So Kwame, I'll start with you. Teacher pay emerged as a theme in our submitted questions, and you've both talked about wanting to support teachers in a variety of ways. What's the number-one action the board can take or policy it can pass to make things better for teachers?
So I am the son of a Denver Public School teacher. My mom's been with the district for 38 years, so this is personal to me. We've got to lower our classroom sizes, and I am committed to doing that. I think there's a reason why Denver Public School teachers and educators have endorsed me in this race, because we're going to have to think about innovative ways into we can get our class sizes as low as possible. When teachers were surveyed about their biggest safety concern and what the district could do for them, they didn't talk about SROs, they didn't talk about metal detectors, they talked about lowering class sizes. We are going to have to think critically and innovatively to do this, because we've got to allow our teachers to teach. We've also got to get them the support services, so where they don't have to spend their time also being mental health professionals, also being nutrition professionals, and also helping students with things that are going on outside of their school.
Kwame, thank you. John, what's the number-one action the board should take or policy it can pass to make things better for teachers?
There are some, like, big, important visionary ideas that relate to teacher compensation, to relate to teacher housing, and these are all pieces that are long-term consideration for us to look at. When I'm listening to teachers, as I have over the course of 30 years, where I've been a principal over time, engaged teachers, develop strong schools, one of the things that I know is that they want to be motivated to get better at their work every day. They want to know that they're strong, they can become stronger. And the number-one action that we take as a, we can take as a board, that will have an immediate effect on the culture of teaching in the Denver Public Schools, is to take the LEAP system, which is the evaluation and professional learning system for teachers, and effectively scrap the system. Keep one part. It's about teacher leadership. That's a piece that teachers do appreciate on lots of levels. But right now, the evaluation system is one that rates teachers in ways that they find B-rating, ways that they find offensive, not ways that connect and engage teachers in regard to who they are right now as a teacher, what are their strengths, and where do they want to get better? But that's the work that needs to be done.
Thank you. Moving forward to our next topic, school infrastructure. Melanie?
So the Colorado Hispanic Chamber of Commerce submitted a question about the 2020 bond, which included funding for air conditioning. Some community members also submitted questions about this. Many DPS schools are not air-conditioned. Do you support adjusting the school year to start and end later in an attempt to avoid the hotter temperatures in August? John, start with you.
Yeah, I've been a principal for some time, and I was a principal in a school with 650 children that we ran out and got popsicles every night before the next day, because the way that we were able to keep kids cold is give them a break and give them a popsicle and put it in their hand. We've come a long way with air conditioning, but that needs to be a priority for us in regard to how we are framing what it means to be in a healthy school context. So take that as a priority, make certain that we're considering all of the healthy contexts that a school needs to have for its children, begin there, but then move forward by listening to teachers and principals around what the needs are at their school sites as we continue to look toward evolving our bond interests into the future.
Would you support adjusting the school year to start and end later?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, the school year. So that's been done a couple times, right, over the course-- This is what experience brings to the table. Sounds like a great idea. It's been done twice in the time that I've been a principal in the Denver Public Schools. When we're chasing weather, that can be frustrating, and we're never going to win. But when we're acknowledging that our facilities need to be upgraded so that we're not chasing weather, we're going to be in a better place. Thank you, Melanie.
Kwame, yes. Same question about the, adjusting the school year to start and end later to address non-air-conditioned schools.
I agree, experience matters. I wholeheartedly agree with John. The solution is not changing the calendar because of the weather. The solution is getting air conditioning in our schools. And we need a school board that demands that from going on. We've actually spent budget to put air conditioning in schools that are then slated to go in the closing list. There's a lot of mismanagement that's occurring that we fundamentally got to change. But that 2020 bond, just to show how little funding we have in our schools, that bond said that we're going to make it to where DPS can raise its minimum wage to $14.77. And here we are, in 2024, the minimum wage is going to be like $18.40. We have got to get more money into our schools. I am the only candidate that is proposing a 2024 mill levy based on transportation to increase the resources that we are bringing into our schools. The other thing that you've got to ask yourself is, in a time of declining enrollments, if you've got some charters that aren't performing, are they taking money out of our schools? My answer, possibly. And we've got to do that, because we do not have enough resources in Denver Public Schools to equitably teach and help our students moving forward.
Kwame, we'll take you at the end of that question to remind folks, we're almost worth closing statements. We have time for one very short question. Michelle, and candidates, short answers in this one, not the one-minute short ones. Michelle?
All right, this question was submitted by a community member. DPS recently ended bus service to magnet programs for students identified as highly gifted and talented. Do you support bringing back bus service for these programs, and how would you pay for it, Kwame?
So I just proposed, we've got to get the 2024 transportation mill levy in place. I think what we've got to think critically about with our magnet schools is how they are affecting neighborhood schools. I'm a huge, huge proponent of magnet schools. My mom was the principal of Lincoln Elementary. That is a Montessori magnet school that is an excellent school. Every neighborhood needs access to those types of schools. In the interim-- Oh, I didn't get a minute?
Thank you.
Can I say one final thing? But that means if a neighborhood doesn't, and a great magnet school, our parents should allow them, we should allow our parents to have their kids' choice into that magnet school. I'm in favor of that.
Thank you. John?
I would love to be in favor of it immediately, but I have to acknowledge that my children gain advantage of that, from that. My children chose to go to DSA, and we're bussed across town. And a part of that is because we are white, privileged individuals, and that is a legacy opportunity that is provided for some, but not all. Yes, it would be great to replace some of that magnet transportation, to go back into play. But when we're replacing that, we need to understand that we are putting into play further inequities in our school district that we have not yet solved for, and that's the bigger challenge that we have to engage over time.
Thank you, gentlemen. That will get us to our closing statements. We've asked our candidates to give a 30-second closing statement. We flipped a coin before the debate to determine order. Kwame, you're up first for a 30-second closing statement.
I'm so happy to be here, and the one thing that I want to emphasize is that educators have supported me in this race, and I want to talk about why. I think it's because I'm a son of a teacher. I think it's because I will always choose optimism for Denver Public Schools. I think it's because I'm entirely focused on getting results. I think having the experience of being both an insider, understanding how the system works, going through it, and being an outsider, bringing in actual experience outside of Denver Public Schools, and seeing what our community is seeing right now, and bringing that back to the board, that's exactly what we need. You've got to ask yourself, is the--
Kwame?
Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry, the cards are--
No offense, sorry.
John, your 30-second closing statement.
Thank you. I, after 35 years, continue to be fully committed to the success of every young person across our district. I've worked across this district as a principal, as an area superintendent. I've worked in other districts as a chief academic officer, as a dean of students. I remain committed because I know this. We're not doing the job that we need to yet. We need change on our board.